Well, I'm calling this meeting to order. Is there everybody else?
Let us pray.
Almighty gracious God, we do give you thanks and praise for this night to come together to do the business of the city. But we also praise you and thank you for all those who work in our city and help keep us safe. Firemen, policemen, those who work on the safety streets, and just the administration here in the office. So we praise you for each gift given and how they help us and they help the community. Provide with us tonight and be with us as we seek to do thy will and help the people and serve them. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an addition to the agenda tonight that we're gonna go ahead and let them speak. It's on the sewer.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, sorry.
Coming up on the agenda.
Yeah.
Now, this is Brad Albretton and Jonas Sargis.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Brad Albretton. I'm the administrator of the Tanney County Regional Sewer District and wanted to speak to you tonight about the renewal of the Tanney County Sewer Sales Tax. With me is Jonas Sargis. He's the executive director of the Tanney County Partnership. And Jonas is heading up the effort to get out the information to the community. The vote is coming up on August 3rd, so it's just a little over two weeks away. And we just want to share some information with you so everybody can be informed. The tax that is at issue here is a tax that was approved in 1993 by a vote of the people. It was a, it is a half-cent sewer sales tax that was approved in 93 that allowed the sewer district to start building projects in the county to sewer areas that, in the incorporated areas that did have sewer that are on private septic systems and maybe small private treatment facilities. Over the years, we have installed over 250 miles of sewer, over 5,000 customers have been served, and over approximately 100 private treatment facilities have been eliminated. The, the tax has generated just a little over $171 million from its inception, and the current fund balance is right at $7 million. All that money has gone to sewer infrastructure in Tanney County, building sewer extensions, building lift stations, building treatment facilities, upgrading all of that infrastructure. The tax has funded a couple unique programs, one being the BioSolids. That is a unique program really anywhere you go. Not a lot of places have a BioSolids facility. Back several years ago, the county partnered with the Department of Natural Resources and obtained a grant and built the BioSolids facility, which has components at the city of Branson and at the city of Hollister. And I believe everyone's wastewater that is in the county, Chris, you guys do participate in that, right?
Mm-hmm.
All the wastewater collected from the treatment facilities, or the sludge, I should say, goes to the BioSolids facility where it processes it to a compost light material. You guys have probably heard about it, being a participating member. That keeps hundreds of trucks off the road from land to flying sludge, which is known as what would happen if they go taken to farmers' fields. The subject tank pump-out program has been a unique thing that has come out of the Sewer Sales Tax for those places that are out in the county that are not on a central sewer system, that are on a septic system. And many of them probably will never be connected to central sewer. They can apply once every four years and get their septic system or subject tank pumped out and inspected. So that's a benefit for those people that are not on a central sewer. Currently, the tax generates right at $8 million a year. And again, we use those funds to continue to sewer areas in the county and upgrade our existing infrastructure. The municipalities get a share in that money. Every year, they apply for the projects that they have. And we'll use those monies to upgrade their existing infrastructure. You guys have a treatment facility. The district's been a great, or the city's been a great part of the district since around 2010, I think was when our Y-Highway was, our beach project was put online and connected in here to the city. And we've since put online Powersite and the Excede project and have some other projects in our master plan as well. Our master plan was updated around a year and a half ago or so. And there's many, many other projects throughout the county that need to be completed. So we're asking for this to be renewed on August 3rd. The tax is a renewal at the existing level. It is not an increase. The tax has been in existence since 1993. It's a half-cent tax, so every, a half of a penny of every dollar at retail sales in the county goes to fund those sewers. The ballot language, I'll just read to you very quickly, is very simple. It says, "Shall Tanney County continue to impose a county-wide sales tax of 1% for sewer purposes for an additional period of 25 years?" So again, it is important to note that it is not a tax increase. It's just a renewal for an additional time period. The 25-year was developed out of the potential need to bond a future sewer project. Sewer projects are very expensive in Tanney County, and if we needed to bond more than just a very few million dollars, we could do that. The bond term's right at 20, or 20 years, and giving us a little few extra years past 20 would help us do that. The tax, if it is not renewed, will impact Tanney County. The rates at the sewer district, and I'm assuming all of the municipalities, will go up on the sewer side because we all benefit by upgrading our infrastructure, lift stations, things like that that can be paid for out of the tax would now have to be paid for by the sewer users, sewer customers. That's all I wanted to mention. Jonas is here and can speak a few minutes.
And you said this is for like 125 years, right?
Yeah, I should have mentioned the sunset in 93 was approved for 10 years. It was renewed in 2000 for 20 years. So our current sunset is 2023, September of 23, so we're two years out from that. If the tax were to fail, we would have to wait two years to run it again. The statute that this is under has a two-year cool-off period. And the 25 years would start from the end of that 23 date.
Okay.
And it is coming up on August 8th. 3rd, August 3rd.
Oh, yeah. You want to get that right.
He's just throwing it.
He can't legally say this, so I can't do it. Oh, yes, on August 3rd, that's why I'm here. He's here to educate, I'm here to advocate. So for us, it's a quality of life, quality of place, infrastructure, and economic development issue. Obviously, the quality of life, this, this is a huge benefit. If you just look at the quality of drinking water alone for the groundwater system, what this infrastructure does for Tanney County, that speaks for itself. We all know, and we've been facing a labor shortage for years. The pandemic really amplified that. But to solve that problem, we also have to have more housing. And, you know, you guys obviously are benefiting from a new housing project here that's moving to. We need about 18 more of those throughout the county and then some. But having the ability to expand, improve, and extend central wastewater collection infrastructure to other places in the county allows for policies better and less expensive acreage for housing development. So that's another plus. I think one thing that Brad did not mention, I think is really unique to our program or to the sewer district, is that this is a sales tax dedicated revenue stream. Most, if not all sewer districts in the state of Missouri are tied to your property taxes. And with the benefit of having millions of visitors coming to Tanney County to help with that burden, is a plus. So not only does it, you know, save the natural beauty of our community for us, but also for, you know, the lakes and streams and the outdoors is also a big draw for our tourism industry. So we feel very strongly that this program needs to continue as is. Like Brad said, the only difference is the 25-year versus a 20-year sunset. And just like he said, that gives us about a seven-year window to, you know, to evaluate and determine if there is a need to do a bigger bonded type project and fall within that 20-year bonding cycle as you do as doing the municipal bonds. You know, we're gonna get better rates, better terms if we know that that sunset is beyond the term of that bond. So other than that, that's really the only difference. I think the last time it passed, the ballot language was a little bit more complicated because there was Prop A, Prop B, and allowed for use of the funds for some infrastructure costs for the judicial center. That's all gone, taken care of. So again, simple ballot language, need 50-plus-one to pass. There's even a note that says this is not an increase or a new tax. So again, my job here is to ask you to vote yes on August 3rd. Unless you live in Marion Woods, it's the only thing you're gonna see on the ballot. So what you're gonna start seeing on Wednesday are mailers, digital advertising, all the things that you would get. If you voted in the last five years in an August or special election in Tanney County, you'll be getting three mailers in the mail that'll have more information. We'll have dedicated website that you can click through some of the digital advertising that will take you to more information. And again, vote yes on August 3rd.
And the tourists, I don't think I mentioned, Jonas, that the tourists fund a large portion of this tax. They, depending on what year, that number kind of changes, but it's, it is a large, large portion of the tax revenue that the tourists descend in our county. They, they bravely pay that, which is a great benefit to us.
And I think that was, you know, back, I wasn't involved in those discussions back in the early 90s, but I'm sure that had a lot to do with why you do a sales tax versus a property tax. So, thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For the opportunity. And again, vote yes on August 3rd.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, man. Thank you.
All right. Number one, the second and final reading of bill number 537 abolishing the Forsyth Advisory Park Board.
Make a motion for the second and final reading of bill 537 abolishing the park board.
Certainly. All in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You want to read by title only? Port of Alderman, City of Forsyth, Missouri ordnance repealing chapter 125 of the city code, thereby abolishing the park board, and that is bill number 537.
Motion to approve and enact.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
Yep, it was right where it was. Okay. Number two, discuss school, education, animal, laboratory. Got some gentlemen here.
Appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to come visit with you about this. I've got some information to share with you. Probably is, but just in case.
I read through it. You did a, did your homework.
There's copies here if any of you all would like to see one. You guys might be getting one. Yes, sir.
I'm Jeff Mingus. I'm super into Forsyth schools. I've got Clint Galey and Patrick Holt here with me today. I'm just gonna kind of introduce the project, and I'm gonna let the experts speak to what their plan is. I will tell you this, in our high school, we've got over 400 kids, and these two gentlemen represent a club that, an organization that represents over 140 of those students. We've traditionally been a strong FFA Act program in Forsyth, but we've grown up to where we have now two full-time teachers. So a lot of kids go through that program, and a lot of kids that have no agricultural experience prior to come out with a lot of experience after. My daughter's one of those. She didn't know anything about anything. And this guy that taken her in three years transferred to her, she's, was on the state championship forestry team, so.
I saw that.
A lot of honor pays for a kid that didn't know a tree from a blade grass before she started, so. But we are looking for an opportunity to basically extend our learning outside the traditional classroom. These guys do a lot of things within the school day, in the confines of our facilities, that kids' experiences could be enriched and enhanced if we could go outdoors and we have some projects that are ongoing and some hands-on learning experiences. Kids that have many, many interests, different interest in agriculture can gain some lifelong experiences and learning opportunities. I'm gonna let Clint and Patrick speak to you about what their plan is. What we're talking about is the 54 acres that the school has that was donated by the Hirschen family many years ago. That property is set aisle as far as the district's use. We went in, we did some initial cleanup. Basically, some kids had a clubhouse in there, and we got the property, we cleaned that up. It's a nice property, and we don't have any plan to build a structure there as far as a school building. Doesn't make sense for us there. But we do have a fantastic opportunity to put this to use as an outdoor classroom and educational lab. So Clint, Patrick, would you like to come up and explain the use of that?
I'm Patrick Holt. And then there's a big guy on the block, I guess you could say. So for that, this started out as wanting an animal science lab, and we've kind of put our thoughts together. So if you can look at this map here, you can see that we've got plans for an animal science lab, and also we incorporated our entire program into an outdoor lab for this area. As far as the animal science portion, we're wanting to clear about eight acres, and that's gonna be fenced. And what this does is it allows us to have the things that we talk and teach in the classroom, you know, we can go out, we can put, put that hands-on into practice for these kids. And it's something that will be, will be amazing for them to have the opportunity to do that. But we want to have a maximum five pet of animals, and what we aim to do with this is we aim to keep them there for just the school year, portion of the year. And we're going to, you know, we listed out several things here. We could, we could teach these kids artificial insemination, embryo transfer, different kind of treatments, vaccinations, all that stuff. We can go through that with them. And at the end of the year, we can sell these animals, and we won't have anything over the summer unless it's for a day or so here and there. But we've discussed highly about the way this is gonna look as far as to the community. And we have a great group of kids. We have a great horticulture program as well, where we can really make this thing look good. And we're gonna do all, all the fence, all the entryways and everything, and it's gonna, it's gonna look really nice and just give those kids an opportunity. Well, as far as the animal side, as you can see on this, on this map here, it's gonna be surrounded by, and Clint's gonna talk about these other zones, but it's gonna be surrounded by, it's gonna have a buffer around it, basically. So in a sense, it's gonna be kind of out of sight, out of mind type of thing as far as the animal side of things. And, you know, if there's some questions that arise as far as manure management and stuff of that nature, then that, that's virtually not gonna be a problem with the limited number of animals we're gonna have. But in the working facility part that we're wanting to construct, it will be cleaned up immediately, so that won't be a problem there. Any questions on any of that?
No. My only questions are the fencing. What kind of, you know, fencing to keep them in, because we have neighbors here.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. We will do a, probably a five or six strand barbed fence around most of it, with pipe entry is what we kind of talked about, and it will be very secure.
Okay.
On that same, on that same note, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and community members here as well. We're in a unique situation at Forsyth in the fact that, and it mentions this in the plan, we have anywhere from six to 15 schools that over the last five years, you know, come to Forsyth to, to improve their forestry teams or improve their greenhouse curriculum or things like that. We meet with a lot of schools. We currently work behind the school, and we travel all over Tanney County into Christian and Green County to do this practice. The 52 and 54 acres that we're talking about is broken down into what's called a cruising plot and a TSI plot. The TSI plot is basically just timber management. We go in and we reduce density to improve current quality. The cruise, which is over on the southeast, that is part of our everyday curriculum. And our Ag Science II projects, they go in and they estimate the value of that timber and potential growth and things like that. The north side, the purple, Forsyth currently has on paper a nature preserve, the, over behind the Boys and Girls Club. That area is not as desirable as the rest. We would like to use that purple as an extension to that. And to add to what Patrick said, the livestock facilities that we're referring to, we're not, we're not talking permanent animals. We're talking temporary, now it will be, it will be every year we hope. And what we plan on doing with the other facilities there besides a classroom is, we have always left over plants in the greenhouse. We can do a U-PIC system outside there. Community members can come, big vegetables if they wanted to. We always have, like flowers that we plant. And it would be, we would do our best to make this a showcase for the community. The last portion is the yellow, glade restoration. Where we live, everybody knows it, we're rocky ground. It's native, native glade ground. The only reason it's not right now is because we moved in and we quit burning. There's a portion of this that, that to look at it, we think it would be pretty easy to bring back, restore to that native glade. Lots of people see it from afar, but they don't have the opportunity to see that close. And this would be a managed area where they could come in and see that, that glade ecosystem, and the kids would gain from it. And we'd like to see more than just our high school kids come in. We'd like to see middle school and elementary be able to go down there. Question, ma'am?
Yeah. When you're doing it, will it be something that, like, the people of the neighborhood can take, like walking trails with their students?
We've actually talked about that. The area, what we're talking about at one time was planned to be an extension of that subdivision. And I don't know why it failed, but I assume it's because the ground is pretty rough. You bet. There will be some dozer operation on the eight to 15 acres to incorporate the livestock. And while that dozer's there, we'd like to map out some areas so walking trails would be added.
Because there's more, there's more grass available for walking trails and things like that?
Yep.
And we know that if we have more hiking trails, we can improve our tourism.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. That's why we're here. We're getting stuff from you guys as well. And we want to make this, you know, primary goal is to educate these kids at a low cost. Secondary goal here is to make sure that the community enjoys and appreciates what we're doing for them, so. Welcome to answer any questions or, or address anything right now if you'd like.
Well, I'm personally seeing what you two can do, and it's amazing what, how you, kids respond to you both. And I think I'm, I'm all for this because I just know how well, how good of a job that you both do. And, and I think it would be a nice addition to your Ag program, so.
Thank you. And we'll be available if there's any questions. Be glad to answer anything as well.
I had called and asked about the distance from the livestock center to the first bridge, closest bridge I can.
Yes, sir. We put that in there. It should about 940 feet it looked like.
And that was a, and that was, that was a cautious estimate. We're purposely locating the facility, when you come in that Swan Valley Drive, I believe is the name of the road, off to the left-hand side, so that if you're coming up that and then gonna turn into the neighborhood, you never lay eyes on that, on that lab classroom. But we measured that in a cautious measurement, just over 900 feet.
There's also a question about manure management. The number of animals that we'll have in the open space, don't expect to see a problem. The only time we might see a manure buildup would be if we had community members bringing in animals for us to work or, or animals to vaccinate or anything like that. And at that point, if we did, if we had a farmer say, hey, can you bring, can we bring our calves in and have these kids work on them? You bet. That manure that's deposited in confinement will be taken care of that day.
And that will be that day. They'll bring them in that morning and be gone probably by noon, most likely one or two o'clock.
Definitely will begin cleaning up.
That day, so.
Well, the access looks like it's through the Swan Valley Drive, the subdivision?
Yes, sir. There's two access points. One would be through the subdivision, the other access that we looked into was behind the Catholic Church. The issue is the, the access to the Catholic Church as far as bringing livestock in or out is the ruggedness of the ground. It would be, it would be very difficult to access any pens in that way.
And the majority of the traffic you're gonna see will be a school bus, and we already run the route, we run a route through that subdivision, so that'd be similar traffic as in.
Yeah, we're not talking weekly loads of cattle here whatsoever. We're talking on a rare instance of farmers saying, hey, you know, we've got, they've got a cow fix in the cab, can we, you know, we would approach them. Can we bring that in? Or we would raise livestock as well, bring in, let these kids see it. Not looking, not gonna have anything in the appearance of a feedlot or anything like that, you know. Well, if there's nothing else?
I just think it's exciting what you're doing.
I do, too.
And how much it's a magnet for agriculture-type stuff.
Yeah.
Throughout the state of Missouri and Arkansas, even the United States, so I appreciate it.
We need more of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And like Jeff's daughter, I mean, you guys are bringing in people that, kids that probably would not have known they had an interest in anything like that, so.
And we make that point first day, day one. You know, you might be put in this class because there's no other option, but we're not, we're not addressing these kids that, and we, that grew up on a farm. We want those kids. We want the kids that didn't just as bad. They need to see the value of what Ag brings to this world.
And it would blow your mind if, well, for a temper week, one day of the year, we bring in a horse and we teach kids how to put shoes on a horse. And just the, the response that we get from that, you know, and we've had some kids that were interested in those types of.
I think that would be cool to see, yeah.
Well, you guys are more than welcome to come down, so.
Well, we do have a coordinate snow livestock in city. With the isolation you're talking about, the limited number you're talking about, the fact we're talking about educating kids, I don't have a problem with that. This is something I, public have, we bring it up tonight, we're gonna vote on it till next month, give the public time to comment to us, get their input from them, so. So, any questions?
And if anybody has more questions, they can call us at school and we'll walk you to the side, show you what the thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. Want to bring back a writer?
Very good.
Thank you. Didn't need you after.
Questions for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go very far. Miss Soylent is having a harvest moon festival.
I have to wait and see if we have a, any athletic tournaments that day.
Okay.
If we don't, there'll be no issue at all.
Okay.
That's the last thing I'm waiting to find out.
That's all I need, and thank you.
You bet. Thanks, guys.
Bye.
All right. Ms. Soylent, you're up.
Yeah, no, but, you know me. This is an extra minute. Thank you. This is a, oh, this is a sample, so don't hold me to it on the schedule, so. There you go. So the chamber's doing the regular harvest moon festival as we do every year. We are, we wanted to bring it back to Main Street. We just didn't have it at Main Street last year because of all the issues that were going on, so we could spread out a little bit more. We, I had talked to Nathan a lot about the closure of the street and figuring out how we could work with the community a little bit better. Instead of starting it first thing in the morning, which would shut down the street at that time, we talked about shutting it down later on in the day. So that most of the businesses would be closed on Main Street. They normally close around noon. Main Street Cafe opens till like 2:00, but he would be open for the event anyway. And after I talked to Buddy Roberts, he really wanted us to start at 1:00. So, I know, they always come in at the last minute. So the idea would be that as the shops were closing on Main Street, we would start setting up the vendors, so the roadblocks would go up at around 12:00. We'd give them an hour to set up. They, they would parade down 160 at 1:00, and they, those, the side-by-sides and the classic cars would parade into Main Street and park, so they're not leaving. It's not a parade where everybody gets to be in the parade. It's only the people that are on display that day. So you can't come with your tractor, unless you're gonna show your tractor instead. But that would give an area that the side-by-sides could trailer in, come off, come down the streets, do the event, and then we wanted to close at 7:30, which is dusk, because it's a really big deal for the side-by-sides to have their lights on. So then they would get to come back through town, kind of like a night parade, and load up. This year is a little bit different as well. Before, we've always had vendors and things like that work together. But we're really trying to reach out to the other groups that are losing some of their population or some of their numbers. And so the Nisonic Lodge is gonna come out, and they're gonna do the children's area. The Elks is gonna come out, and they're gonna do the food contest. We're gonna put a stage on David, so that, that helps block that off. And then another kid's stage. And then another kid's stage down at my building. Um, the kids' area would be at my build, at, at our building, mostly because it's flat and it's got the most electrical hookups, so there's power all over the parking lot. Um, so that is the biggest change. So before, we would block the street from about Buddy's, but from Great American, from, um, the American family and on, right? This year, we're asking to come across, and you guys have a map over there, that we would block it from our first driveway across so that you could still get into Save-A-Lot because Save-A-Lot doesn't close. They stay open. So that way the traffic could come in, they could come into Save-A-Lot and then they could still leave. Um, and, um, let's see, what else? And then the detour would be behind our building, that street there. We would put a detour so if you had to get to the post office, you could go on that back road and up and get to the post office. The highway department, who I spoke to a few years ago, was very interested that if we chose to shut down the street, shut down 160, they just wanted the signs out like six weeks early. I was like, really? And they're like, the better, sooner the better, so people don't call us and are mad. So, um, we have a couple of different places now that they've said we could put signs on their buildings and, um, vinyls to really get the word out. Let's see if there's anything else. Um, parking could be an issue because we're growing. So, we talking to the Sonic Lodge, they're going to allow that, theirs for parking. We would definitely have it marked where you're going to get to parking and where, and put that on Facebook and the newspaper and our website because then Pene would have parking, the Presbyterian Church would have parking. We would, um, depending on how many entries we have, we try to get as much parking after the inlet when you go into the county. Does that make sense? You know, talking about the circle drive that's in the county. We have blocked it off right there so that the cars come in and, um, park inside that lot and then you'd have parking past that section. Then we have all with 160 that you could park because all the stores are closed, maybe not the hair salon. But if this gets approved, then I'm going to go talk to the businesses and have a letter with them so I could talk to them. I just didn't want to get everybody upset if it's not made for it, so. Not that they would be upset.
No, I just have a few, so I, I need to know exactly, um, because we had discussion earlier with, uh, police chief and, uh, fire chief and Chris here. And, um, earlier on, the parade route, the, what, which streets we were going to block, whether it would affect Save-A-Lot, the post office, um, the barber shops, et cetera. So, you, are the barber shops closed at, by noon?
So Dennis always closes for this event and he closes because we used to open at eight. He will, already closes at noon on that day.
Okay. I figured he might be on Saturday closed at noon.
The library closes at noon. Technically, the post office closes, but you can still go in and you might have to get, so that's why we would detour people that way.
Okay.
Just in case. Um, I haven't talked to the mouse pad yet, but I don't think he would care if he closed.
Okay. So, what I need you to do is I need you to get permissions from these people first. And well, so what we can, we can, we can approve this tonight with a Plan A and a Plan B type of thing.
Okay.
And, um, because we need to make sure that all of our, our businesses are on board down there. We don't want to offend somebody.
Right.
Just, and I think this is a wonderful event. I, I love it. I love the fact that it's back into town and stuff. And, um, but like I said, we definitely don't want to step on anybody's toes.
And I, I talked to the library, they're excited. In fact, they're now going to put out a booth, like they're, like all of a sudden, I guess everybody's turned around on Main Street and they're like, yeah, we really want it. So, um, there are the businesses on the other side that there's a hair salon there, but like talking to Dennis, I think the biggest problem in the past was that, um, it was done and then nobody really discussed their parking this time. Like it's very planned out where the parking is.
Yeah.
So if the salon's going to stay open afternoon, then we would put up a little sign, hey, this is the salon parking till they, whenever they're closing.
Right. And that, that definitely needs to be, yeah. And so you might, when you're talking to them, um, make sure that they're aware that, you know, that if they put up signs or you're going to put up signs or what's going to happen there that, so they're not, their, their clientele can still come in.
Right.
And, um, anyway, and then the parade route, um, is it coming from the school or?
Both. So it was, so the side-by-sides are definitely going to have to have trailers.
Uh huh.
So they would trailer in to the school, get, get their vehicles off, then they would parade from the school to Main Street and park.
Okay.
Then at 7:30, right, as we get everything ready to go again, then, because they're on that actual, I would put them together so they're not vendors in between, then we would get them put together again and parade them back out.
Same route.
Same route.
Same route.
Back line, Schultz, that.
No, because I, after I talked to Nathan, they thought it was too long, too far and everything.
It's two highways and Modavir really.
Right.
So.
And we are trying to then work with the Tane County Fairground to keep that money going in town because a lot of these people with the side-by-sides will be outside, so it's outside dollars coming in. And so we're going to try to work with them to actually do an event that night there with the side-by-sides.
Okay.
So if we become not an all-day event, but a longer event, and hopefully by them coming through town, they get to see the town and they want to come back and participate in other four second events, so.
And that, the side-by-sides would be like at seven o'clock or?
They would leave at, dusk is at 7:30, so I figured they're gone, their, the second parade would be at 7:30.
And they all have lights, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's their big thing. I don't have a side-by-side.
Yeah, I don't either.
But it's a big thing.
But yes. Um, and then, um, okay, and then Republic Services is who the city uses for trash, so you would need to coordinate that.
And last, yeah, last time they gave us all the trash cans, so we call them back. They dump them off early in the morning in our parking lot and then we put them throughout the area so that they're, so people are definitely using the trash.
Okay, so what I need from you on that one is a statement from Republic that that's all going to happen so that we don't have trash everywhere. And then, um, let's see, what was the last thing?
It was on your application, you had rain tree.
Well, I couldn't remember the name when I was doing it from, I was coming up vacation, what you wanted, what you wanted from me.
We got, we got a specific contract.
The parade.
No, I knew that, so we're not.
Are you having a dance or anything or?
Um, so what, one of the big things, if you look on this page, and this, these are things that have been discussed. But because we didn't have it sealed in a timeline, nothing is in stone. There are a few things in stone we knew we were going to do. So, we do the opening ceremony. The opening ceremony would be about 1:30. That is the prayer, the pledge of allegiance. Um, hopefully we get the ROTC out to kind of do the flag ceremony with that. Then we're going to have different brands and shows come over and do music throughout the day. Um, there is Little Miss Ozarks, that includes all of Stone County. If you're in the Ozark area, Ozark mountain areas, you could be in the Little Miss Ozarks. Um, so that runs for about an hour and then we go back to music. So most entertainers, they have this field that they do for about 20 minutes. And so they'll come over and do a 20-minute easy peasy, come in, do their thing and leave. If, if this is approved, then we'd like the band at like six o'clock at night, when it just gets a little cooler, and we'll do all the awards. We'll give a break for the band in the middle and they'll come back and do the last bit at seven o'clock and then get ready for the night parade. We realize that this is going to be a bigger event than it has in the past, but one of the things that we've been working on during COVID is working together with the other nonprofits. So where before the Chamber had like five volunteers, now we have the volunteers from the law, Elks Lodge, from the Sonic Lodge. Uh, the Lions are going to come, we're going to, they're, the Elks Lodge is actually bringing in other Elk members from all over to come down and help. So, it won't be just five volunteers.
Right. So. Yeah, I like the planning. We, it just looks like a few more things need to be cleared up, but other than that, I love the idea. And like I said, I'm glad it's back in town and it's unfortunate it can't be in Shadow Rock, but, uh.
Yeah, unfortunate.
Yeah.
Bowls, bowls.
Chris quit opening the switch on that one.
I was just saying, that's where everybody puts it. And if, if this was to go really well and we were like just jam packed and there was no other place to go, then hopefully next year our, because we had discussed it about moving it to Gold, to Schulzben Park, which it would be even better with the side-by-sides. But I just think a lot of changes have happened within the last couple of years, so we want to bring it back to Main Street, get it reestablished, and if everything goes really well, then it would be a better venue out at Schultz Ben Park.
And we're in a big process right now of developing Schultz Ben, so, I mean, a big process. So, um, hopefully even by next year, we'll see some definite, um, things going on. So, there, and, uh, more, and then we can have more events there and stuff too, so. And you're, if you stay, you're going to hear that about how many things we have going on there.
I would love to stay. I'm supposed to be in a demonstration.
So.
I'll get all those things done.
Yes.
If you ask. I just didn't want to do.
We're going to.
Because I clearly didn't have a time to tell people like, hey, and then there's no time that we were confident.
Okay, so we can approve this on the contingency that, um, you talked to the businesses and we get all, you know, we have all of our ducks in a row as far as, everybody's on board. And, um, and that, the trash service and, and then we can, and Dr. Mingus, I'm looking, waiting for his, you know, go ahead on that too, because that is, that parking lot is a big deal of using it, and so, um, anyway.
And I, and I already put out save the date, I just didn't put the location.
Okay.
So, because if we have, uh, a, a business that says no, that's not what we want.
Right.
We don't want it here. And if that means that it's not going to happen on Main Street, then all, then I guess we would have to find another location.
Yeah.
But I have to know now. So if, if you're saying if one business says no, then we're looking.
No, I'm not saying if one business says no, but I would appreciate, you know, you, you went to every business to make sure that they are.
Aware.
Yes. And, um, because, and then that Save-A-Lot, that they're aware of how that would be, their, their clientele would enter, their customers would enter. And so, anyway.
We've even, I think last time, had somebody standing out there making sure that their Save-A-Lot customers got in and not.
Yeah.
Okay, so when, when I was talking about it earlier today, I said, there, there's no way we're shutting Shadow Rock down. And, um, because going to the post office and the, the grocery store and stuff, but you're starting a little bit later. And so, um, that puts a little bit of a difference in, in it, um, because the post office will be closed pretty much as far as the interior goes, um, they're picking up stuff. It'll just be people that are, you know, going.
Right.
Pick up their mail and stuff like that. So, uh, if you can find a good way to make that a detour, um, I'm, I'm on board with it. But, um, we definitely, uh, need to make sure that that is, that's going to work.
Well, and the highway department once said that if they have a sign available, they would even bring it out.
Okay.
So I can talk to them about that as well and see what they say. Their thing is they'll get phone calls all.
Yeah, please talk to the postal people too, just to, you know, see what their feelings are too. It's just, you know, we just, we're a community, we need to make sure that everybody's, the majority are on board with this. And so that, and everybody understands and stuff, but it's just a short, it's a one-time event, once a year. And, um, anyway, so, we'll see.
So what type of, do you need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion to go ahead and allow her to, um, go ahead and have the, the festival and stuff and, like I said, it would just be, you know, she's going to go out and get her, do her due diligence as far as talking to the businesses and making sure the trash is all taken care of and all that, so, yep.
I would make the motion to allow the Harvest Moon Festival to move forward with our planning and to keep us involved and in the process, so.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And since it's coming up right around the corner and you guys do have plans for the park, if that's something you want to unveil on the stage, you'd probably do so.
Okay.
So we just have to know and then we get you a portion of that.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you guys.
You guys are working hard on that, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I've got approved dental insurance renewal. Angela?
We got our renewal back. It renews September 1st. It's a 3% increase on the employee dental insurance. And, uh, compared to the other plans that she just priced for me, this is still a good deal.
I'm moved that we approved the renewal of the dental plan for employees. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nope, you're fine, you're fine. It's all good.
I was waiting for Cheryl.
Yeah, I know. Cheryl, Miss Cheryl.
She okay?
Cheryl, could you use your prayers? She's not feeling well, so. Okay. Let's see, we've got to approve the addendum to the School Resource Officer Agreement with Forside School. There was a few changes made there. David, you want to?
Yeah, we, we put in some different additions, uh, and talked with Mingus before and Griggs. And he said that, uh, they have somebody now that they, they can use for the crossing guard, so we took the crossing guard portion out of that.
Okay.
He's still going to take, the rest of the stuff is fine with, but he has somebody that he's good, so, so he'll do that.
Okay. So we need to approve this?
Motion to approve the addendum for School Resource Agreement. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss public messaging system options. Chris, have you got anything?
Nathan was.
Nathan?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Nathan. Yes. You got some more information on the?
Sure, other than what's in your packet, um, is a public information, uh, it's just part of the tool. Um, again, it's cell-based and so it is opt-in. Um, so it kind of, I kind of spelled it out as far as what the options are there and available for it. And it has a lot of different tools to be able to utilize, I think, within the city to educate and to inform the community on different events or emergency situations and things like that, so, um, you guys want?
I read through it and I really like it. And it's a reasonable fee.
Are these two different or, I mean?
Yes, yeah.
Two different, this is from Nathan's talking. Thanks. That looks really good.
City of Hollister, City of Branson both utilize the program. Uh, City Branson's been on it since, I believe they had a, uh, actually used to be, I think still glad they were on before and they should, this company seems to be very pleased. I don't know what the number is as far as, uh, community feedback since it is opt-in from the community, so someone that wants on it has to call in and request to be put on, on the call-out list, so.
Can we send that info out into, with the, um, water bills? Yeah. Okay.
It can go out that way, it can go out through Facebook, our website and then. It can go out that way, it can go out through Facebook, our website and then.
Right. We need to cover all of our bases there because not everybody has Facebook or might catch it.
Or everybody gets a water bill.
It might be worth talking about with the newspaper about it being our new emergency messaging system to educate the community.
Yeah, then on you.
Clint's got something to add.
I got a question on that. What are people that are outside the city limits, can they get in, opt-in on that?
I don't know.
I'm sure they.
Yeah, there's a number. I can't remember what it's on the list as far as how many.
It's 100,000 messages a year, I think.
Yeah. And they're, they said they're pretty flexible on that. But yeah, it's not strict for the city. Now, you can restrict that on the admin side if you like. But like City of Branson, you can go on theirs right now and put a request in and it'll send a request into them. And they can opt-in even though if you're not in the city limits.
Okay.
So Clint, would you see that mostly for the weather stuff?
For weather, I mean, alerts, you know, I'm just right down the line highway outside the city limits. So, you know, it would be helpful to me, I think, you know, especially weather-related stuff. Because I can hear, like when the tornado sirens go off, I can hear Forside and I can hear a little bit of power sites too and stuff. But yeah, it'd just be, it'd be helpful, I think, in some of your outside close areas, neighborhoods.
Well, and also if we had happened to, which is rare, have a boil. Man, it isn't, it wasn't a mandate or of any type, but.
Advisory.
Advisory, thank you for the right word. Anyway, if we had that, then people that also come into town to eat might have a heads up too that there might be water shut down or something at that point. So anyway.
Do you have a recommendation?
I mean, I mean, for the price, I mean, it has a lot of options there available, not just, I mean, obviously on emergency management side, but on citywide as well. I know, so if you're going with a product, I mean, that would be my recommendation. To be able to reach.
Which one?
The most.
Nixle.
Yep. That's what I thought.
Which one were you recommending?
The Nixle.
Nixle. Nixle, okay.
That's the one I liked, but that's just me.
So do you want a motion?
Yep.
I would move that we move forward with the Nixle Engage Emergency Contact Program.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Nathan.
I think that'll make a lot of people feel better too. And then the fact that we're letting some others opt-in. Because I know there are other people outside and I hear that a lot that live just outside of city limits and stuff and they still come to Forside. So anyway, I think that would be good neighborly. All right. All right, discuss the PRN positions. This is me. This is something I wanted to throw in there and add because pretty much anywhere you go, there is, at the hospital, there's PRN physicians. At the school, there's substitute physicians and stuff like that. And as you know, there is a shortage of employees basically about anywhere. And our police department is in, is no different than any other business. And so what I'm wanting to do is some of the officers that we have had here previously that know our city and that also do, what is that, the reserve.
The reserve.
Time and stuff that we actually pay them. And so that we are, maybe we can get a few more of their hours from them. A little bit more of their time than just a reserve time. And anyway, so that's kind of the thing that I'm, I'm wanting to discuss. It's, it would be something that we would eventually have to put into, you know, if we decided to do it, we would have to put together a policy and rules that we were wanting to, you know, the stipulations to everything. So that they worked here before, that they knew our city, that they've, I don't know. Angela, what else do they need as part of being an employee?
Maybe a part-time employee position basically.
Yeah. There would be no benefits or anything like that, just like any other substitute and stuff like that. There's really no benefits. But at least, you know, if they wanted to pick up some hours and stuff like that and get their reserve time too, they could get paid for it. David, you got anything you want to throw in there?
I mean, so I've called around a couple of places that actually do this. A lot of their requirements is that they have already been to the training program. It's established and they've been here before. They can't have another commission for another agency. They have to be solely here. So they can't go work for another sheriff department or police department and do that. They've left here to go do another job, another career field. But they, their heart's still in the right place. They want a reserve. Our reserve program is around 16 hours a month. They do it for free, give or take. We ask them when they can. With this program, we can see if we can bring them in and they will cover a shift that an officer would not like covered. So if I call them and say, somebody's sick or somebody's taking vacation, they cover that shift. They will get paid. Their other reserve time, if they're not covering an actual shift that's on the schedule, is still a reserve time that's free. You know, for training, like firearms or anything like that, that still falls under the reserve time. It's only when they're covering a shift. And it's what we've talked about is discussing how much dollars and cents. The old thing, show me the money is very prevalent. Because we're asking them to do us a favor. So that's what I'm going to leave up to you guys.
Okay. So that's something that we, I'm just, I wanted to get the, it started tonight. The thought processes started on it. And you guys be thinking about what you would want to see out of it. And anyway, we'll regroup at another date.
I think it's important that we pursue this immediately because we are short staffed and police officers are short here. Branson, Hollister, Springfield, those are Nixle. We got to do something. We can't work these guys 80 hours a week. Well, could, but they'd want to get paid for it. So I think we need to pursue it.
Okay.
Immediately.
All right. So we'll start working on the policy of that. Then we're putting together what we're wanting to see and then the pay that we're looking at for it. Okay? I'll start working on that and then put it together and I'll get with you guys.
I think the chief's got it pretty well dialed down.
He does, and he's the one that's been guiding me. Well, I threw it out there and then he, then he was like, then he's been kind of doing a lot of the footwork of what other facilities are doing it. And so anyway.
Just need to figure out how much money.
Yeah.
When it's paid, like if they're at Ranger or something like that, do they get paid for that?
So anything that is required for them to not cover a shift. If they're actually covering a shift that an officer would be working, working patrol. Other than that, there's some, there's some leeway time for like training and stuff like that. Now, I don't know if they're a part-time employee or they get paid for every hour that they work. I don't know. That's one of those, I got to sit down with Angela and figure that one out.
One of those tough things, we cannot require our volunteer, our employees to volunteer their time. So range training is a good question. Those kind of things are going to come up and probably going to have to be a paid thing.
Well, and if they don't get paid benefits, that's a big chunk of money.
It is.
We're just going to pay them hourly so we can look at that and say, what's it going to take to hire you who are not giving you benefits?
But you're only talking about 24 hours a month, right?
That's right.
It is, and there's right now, I think, only two people.
We have two, we have two that are still reserves here.
Qualify, so anyway.
It's not going to be like we gain a whole officer.
No, it won't, but at least if somebody needs to take a day off, we're not so strapped and somebody else is having to step in and work so many more extra hours. So anyway, that's kind of what we're looking at on that part of it.
Is there any way we can get this moving tonight rather than waiting another month?
It's totally up to you. You need to figure out an amount though.
I think that needs some consideration.
Okay. But you want to get this ball rolled in?
Get it rolling with the consideration of pay as it remains.
All right. We'll do that. So is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Discuss Schulz Bin Park improvements, and there is a lot going on there.
Yeah, I had Cheyenne make some copies because there is a lot going on. Do you have a copy, Chris? Did I ever give you a copy?
You did. You did. You got your list too?
He's said a lot of things, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure he's.
Yeah, but you, that's quite a good idea.
We are putting $85,000 in the budget for this coming year for the park. The last couple of years, we've talked about doing more at Schulz Bin and it looks like every year we're going to lose Shadow Rock. So we're going to go ahead and bite the bullets and spend money out there. That plan I gave you, Chris was out with COVID and there may be some adjustments in lighting and water and so on and so forth. But basically, that's what we're looking at. A new tennis court that will go by our basketball court. An access road goes all the way through from the playground area to the fairboard property. Hookups on our property if we want to have an event out there where food trucks can come in and have water and electric. I've got bids here on 20 trees to be planted. They're 12 to 15-foot trees, maple and oak trees of different kinds. I'll get, cover that in a minute. Finished ball field scoreboard, we've had it and we just haven't taken time to do it. A new security camera out there that's going to help us, lighting out there and repair a backboard on our tennis backboard, I don't know what you call it. It's a little rebound board out there that needs some work on it. Jack Harrison has got a bid for me for about $325 to do that. He's got the bid from Panto. Our guys will do the work and they'll have to coordinate who, Chris, and who does it and when they do it. But we'll go ahead and get that backboards in for $325 to get that out of the way, period, over with. I got, trees are a big thing in a park. I checked with CLO, they didn't have any trees this year because of COVID. I checked with James River, who's no longer in business. It's now called Site 1. They don't plant, they sell, they don't guarantee, they don't fertilize, they don't do anything. I got a bid from Wickham Gardens for $9,500. And I called them and asked for additional information. What they gave me was 10 white oaks, 10 maples for $9,500, and that's all they told me. I've got a bid from Carstens. For Carson's, I mean, really detailed bid.
How great is the detail?
Five white oaks, five autumn blaze, five October glory maple and five something else, sunset maple. All trees are 2-inch diameter at the base, 12 to 15-foot in height. Price includes them drilling the hole, planting the tree. They include fertilizer and root stimulant. Travel expense is 200, labor's 4,800. Their total bid is $12,410. They have a 100% one-year replacement on it. And the big thing about planting trees, the size we're going to plant, they need to be done right. We don't want to use a back hole and me and Larry go out there and do it because we don't know what we're doing. So to me, it's worth it to pay the people that are going to give us the guarantee. All we have to do is sufficiently water the trees for the one-year 100%. So first of all, I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept Carson's bid for $12,410 out of our new budget, or out of our existing budget, whichever way it's supposed to be, Angela.
It has to be next year because they will be bringing these trees to a fall.
Okay, yeah, they won't plant them to a fall, so it will be next year.
Some of the work that's being done, I think, will be on this year's budget.
Right. And Chris was out with sickness. There's probably a lot of this that he wants to move around, but he and I have not had an opportunity to sit down and say, you can't put a water line there because of this. You can't put a hook up there. The trees are going to move around, the hookups are going to move around, parking's probably going to change. But basically, we're going to do all of this in some format. And that will make us have a real park.
The problem that we've had so far is none of our trees are surviving the deer. And they're small trees and the deer are just, no matter what we put around them, they're demolishing them. So we're going with big trees and.
So many deer in this town, I did not realize it. Till I work a night shift. Oh my gosh. They are everywhere.
They are, it's bad. And so anyway, but.
I make a. Just after Gary Relling, he's rolling for.
We just had to fix a police car for the deer day. So, oh yeah. Yep, we did.
You got to watch out.
Yep.
Jeff, did you move that? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $325 backboard thing to go ahead immediately. Whenever Chris can schedule it. And a motion to approve $12,410 with Carson's Nursery to plant when the right time comes to land. All we got to do is water them. The size of trees we're getting, they don't think there will be a deer issue with them. If there is a deer issue, we see something going on, Chris and I have talked, get some welded wire put around all of them. We'll just have to spend the money for taking our best. Right?
Yeah. And since you chose a higher bid, I need to make a comment on why you did. Because it had less details?
Well, we have commented less. We need to put some, summarize it.
Yes.
We have a comment, you're recording, right? We have a comment, recording. Right. The other active bidder did not give me any information on warranty, guaranteed, no information on fertilization, no information on backfill. We have to provide backfill when they drill the holes for these trees for Carson's. They wouldn't provide me anything except 20 trees for $9,500.
And we did retain the rest of that dirt there for backfill.
Okay, good. I contacted them and asked them to call me and tell me your information. They never thought of contacting me. So I want to go with the higher bid with all the details.
Are the handwritten notations on Wickham, is that yours?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chad, thanks for your.
Yeah, thank you. You guys, it's, all of you guys have been working hard on it, right?
He need to go over parts, that's all I got. I'm over labor. Well, I'll swap. Now, in addition to that.
Yeah, hold on.
We talked about Charlie Campbell. Well, you know Charlie Campbell, passed away almost two years ago. We did not, Chris brought up the idea of making the lookout at Charlie Campbell Memorial Bank. We called BoDOT to talk about the maintenance they're doing. They told us it wasn't theirs, it's private property. It had sold to somebody out of state in a tax sale, right? And they kept it a year and then went back to its tax sale. So we've lost over a year in dealing with this. I got ahold of a gentleman whose daughter-in-law is Johnny Morris's personal secretary and had her go with Johnny and see if he would be interested in doing something with us. That's been two months ago and I've not heard a word. I'd like to go ahead and start putting numbers together. I think Charlie Campbell's somebody we should recognize. Should come up with some ideas, some kind of memorial out there. Would want to build something or just get a brass plaque or whatever, but put that in motion. And see what it costs to do that.
Okay.
Maybe for next meeting.
Clint?
Can I add, or can I throw some suggestions out on the?
Sure.
On the park up there? When you have the future development, just give you background, I don't know. When you have the future development, just give you background, I don't know if a lot of you guys know, but Tenille and I help run the softball league up there, we get the parks ready every week and the ball field's ready every week and stuff. But I know like the high school practices up there, a lot of your summer Little League people practice up there, we play on Monday nights in the fall and in the spring up there and everything. But if somehow we could put a backstop somewhere in that future development, just to have another place for people to practice, that's been the big complaint that I've heard throughout the community is, you know, when somebody's got it rented, like some of the ball teams do, or like spoken for, not rented, but spoken for, then it's harder to have another, especially with the park flooded, you know, it wouldn't, just a pretty much a backstop, grass, you know, grass infield, whatever, throw some bases down, and just something for another team to practice on.
Okay.
How many acres have we got up there in that area?
Well, we had originally cleared this area off, future development park, that has been leveled by a piece of equipment for a ball field.
Yeah, on the original plan.
On the original plan. Would it be okay if you had a backstop heading back this direction instead of right here? Because I think, I think if you put a backstop right here, it's gonna stymie the development that we're trying to put here for events.
Yeah, I mean, really, I think a backstop on the backside, be closest to the fairgrounds building or whatever, and just something, I mean, where you throw down some bases that 'll hunt a play.
Yeah, and you can still...
Some play here or there.
Open area.
Yeah, for another people to...
Another thought that I had, the rodeo people were in Shadow Rock, and the water kicked them out, and they moved out to the fairgrounds, which didn't work out sharing a track with the demolition derby. And they moved back to the farmer's market thing, right there on the highway, and they don't really have a good area there. I was thinking that maybe we might wanna talk to them. They have offered in the past to do their own work, for their own lighting, their own fencing, their own bleachers. They're kind of homeless, and I think they bring a crowd to Forsyth, and I don't know if we can get all of that to the ball field.
Well, I'm on the Tenny County Park Board, we've offered it up at Mincy to them, but the problem is, is a lot of your Saddle Clubs and everybody, they won't, they don't wanna get that insurance, the bin insurance. And that's where we've had, we've told Mincy, you know, Saddle Club, we've told them all, you know, hey, if you wanna have a fence down there, we need to, you know, and it's really not expensive, it's a, you know, maybe a couple hundred dollars for, you know, a million-dollar insurance policy for a couple days, for extended weekend and stuff, but that's kind of where we've, you know, throwing this out, but that's why at Mincy, we do have an arena down there that's owned by the Tenny County Park Board and everything, and where we run it into is nobody wants to pay that insurance.
Have a place to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been down there, it's nice.
That's good.
And nowadays, you know, I mean, that's just changed within probably the last five years, seven years, something like that, but I mean, you know, nowadays, you can't do it without having a liability, a business insurance policy.
We know, yeah. So, hey, I appreciate your input there, so that gives us some more things to think about, and continue to bring them to us, so.
I got several.
All right.
I can throw. How they're call me. No, we just, I'm pleased to see the ball field and the plans get developed up there. Water fountains, I do know, if we could get something up there for maybe the fall, that's been a big hit, or bigger than ask for.
Yeah.
Hey Clint, does some of those need to be so that people can fill water bottles pretty easily? Is that a need?
I'd say one of them, I wouldn't say the fancy angled water fountain or water bottle fountain.
Just a faucet.
Just a regular or something that, you know, even a fro, well, frost really fell, kids should go up there and open them up. That's, if I may speak, another suggestion is, can we lock that up when it rains?
Lock?
Lock the field up? You know, when it's wet, we had issues this year with, like, when it was wet out, the kids from neighborhood go out and ride their bikes, and it just takes three times longer to dry that field, get the ruts out of there, and it'd kind of be nice that, you know, I understand leaving it open when it's nice out, but, you know, after rain or something like that, when it's drying out, that drying time, it would be nice.
How many locks do you need, sir?
Couple of them, please.
Keep that locked up. You're in charge of that, I'll get you locks tomorrow.
Thank you for your patriotism. Yeah, and I got a little small list that I'll get with Angela for the fall, or for the falling.
And we're gonna get rid of the old dilapidated building and put all of your stuff inside the building and give you a key to it.
Yeah, we're getting rid of the...
Yeah, we're getting rid of the ice ore.
That old thing.
Scoreboard, too, Bob, I know Bob's been, been setting our little whiteboards.
We've been working on that, it's the next project.
Yeah.
It's the next project. Matter of fact, we've already called in locates for the utilities and you guys are designing the post for it.
Just kind of throw it out, it would be nice to have that set up for like high school, because I know the junior high uses it to practice up there, and like it's a longer run from bases. If we could get like three sets of buckets out there, you know, pins for the bases, that way.
Oh, for different sizes.
For different, you know, because I know when the high schools up there, the bases are cluttered out in the outfield, they're pretty much right there at the grass area.
Are there at least two there, Matt?
Well, there's only one.
Yeah, there's only one.
And the infield needs, I mean, you know how second base mindset is up late, and hopefully it's getting to where it's sunk down and in pretty big, so.
Yeah, we did those happen. One year Greg and I did those over, and there's only one.
It'd be nice to have pins out there set up for, you know, the high school, you know, our old people's footprints.
She even like ever four foot?
Yeah, you know, oxygen, can we get oxygen? But no, it would be nice to, and, you know, plugs put in them, and kind of an agreement on people that, especially like the high school, you know.
Just get a list.
We need to, you know, please put the plugs back in if you move bases, let's put them back in, because then Tenille and I are out there, kids can dart around and try to find the plugs.
Right, Clint, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you coming in and giving us this, this is the feedback that we were talking about, instead of just having a small group of people, this is the type of feedback we're asking for. So appreciate that so much.
I appreciate you guys putting some money up there. I know in the past, we did, we worked with, oh, I think I was on city council then back then, but we worked together with the county and did the basketball court and the small tennis deal or whatever it was, half about, you know, my cap, so, yeah. It's needed, I, it does need...
Yeah, it does, and especially since Shadow Rock, it doesn't look like we're gonna get it very much anymore, so it's a shame.
Chris, the video. Last play, which is great, so the plan is...
Trust is gonna be delivered tomorrow, and then the rest of it will be delivered the next day, and so we should start laying out by the end of the week.
Okay.
So I would say it's gonna be built within the next two weeks.
Awesome, it's looking good.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for all your input on that, appreciate it so much. All right, I'm moving on to draft budget discussion.
I gave you a draft budget because there's been a lot of discussion about park things, police things, lots of things that you all need to decide on how you wanna proceed, and put together a draft budget that includes close to our actual spending in 2021, so that you have an idea of where we're coming from. And really, I think I'm just trying to get a feel for where you all are on it, and if you want to have a budget workshop where we sit down and hash through each line, or if you want to just tell me what you want me to do.
I'd like to have a budget workshop. And then we go through each line of what we're... Because, you know, some of these things may not be as important as, you know, when they originally were put into it, and so, so we can get down to what really is important in here and stuff, so I would, I would like to have a budget workshop. And what does everybody else feel?
Think so.
You think so?
We wanna have it.
Yeah? Huh? I am, so it's gonna have to be sometime in, it'd need to be fairly early, we need to pass our budget by the August board meeting. Okay, so how about that first week of August?
I'm gone from the 7th to the 14th.
No, it'd be like the 2nd.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gone.
You're gone, okay.
I could be back on the 4th.
4th?
I could be back on the 3rd.
I think I will be out on the 4th. But actually, I think Greg can help me on that one, so let's just go plan on the 4th.
On the 4th?
Yeah.
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
A Wednesday? Yeah.
So Mincy, you had 6:00.
No, earlier than 6:00, I have a shot to go to at 5:00.
Okay, so.
You gotta do shots where?
At 5:00.
Can you be back here at 6:00?
Yes, okay.
So August 4th at 16:00.
I think I'm clear.
Where are you talking?
I think I'm clear for that one.
Maybe by that time Cheryl...
Please, so I can get one better, too, so.
Every other Wednesday, I'm gone.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right, you are...
I think I'm clear.
Okay.
I think it's the end of July.
Okay, perfect.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM? And somebody let Cheryl know that, please. All right, perfect.
In the meantime, if you have questions on what this is, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay? Let me see. We love you for that. All right, minutes of June 21st, 2021.
I removed and reapproved the minutes of June 21st.
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bills for approval.
Cheryl reads them.
Yeah, I know, it's you that's writing them.
You did such a good job with her bills.
I moved that we approved the bills, June 24th, the amount of $14,166.19. The bills on July 1st, 2021, $8,539.79. And July 8th, 2021, $65,652.61. July 15th, 2021, $62,491.05. So over.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have a number to the minutes.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 5307.
Oh, okay.
This one says Dennis Wintonson read seconded it.
Oh, no, he didn't.
Members voted aye.
Yeah. Haven't I missed that?
I missed that.
We all did. We did, we did.
I even read it, I missed that.
No, he didn't.
Okay, well, then who seconded it?
I moved that we approved it, so.
Well, we can look at the video, so we'll get that corrected. So we need to correct that with the amendment. Thank you, Craig.
Reading happened.
Okay, so we're gonna...
He voted for the reading to happen.
Okay.
That's what this is saying, not that he voted.
Well, and Dennis said all members voted aye.
No.
Other readings.
Said the readings approved.
I'm sorry. Okay, the next paragraph clears it up.
Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't write that in there. I missed it.
We struggle with those.
Did you go to law school? No.
He seconded and just placed it on the first reading then when he...
No, I'm not required.
I'm thinking about Larry, the phone votes, okay, Larry, a Dennis, a Baker, Edson.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Perfect.
No, that's right.
Okay.
I just...
Okay, financial statements as of June 30th, 2021.
Passed your bills, passed your purchase card, you've got your bank balances for the month compared to last year. Next page are your minimum balance requirements, as you set your requirement need at 25%. Your balances are maintaining that level or more on your reserves. Budget, you'll have a budget amendment to go along with your new budget next month, and we will spend less than planned overall with the general fund, and I think in the water sewer, too.
Text message, Julie nothing in on a backup offer yet. I have contacted the agent to see if they plan to write one. Plus one, 417, 988. Everything is in order.
Okay. All right.
You gonna make a motion, second, and approve?
I said, do we make a motion, accept it and approve on the financial statement?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approval of transfers from June 24th through July 15th, 2021.
Motion to approve transfer from June 24th, 2021, to July 15th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That's all she wrote. You a motion?
She don't write anything.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys, thank you, everybody, for your input today.